My call to order, Planning Commission regular meeting in Cape Charles Civic Center, 500 Tazwell Avenue, December 3rd, 2024, 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Smith, present.
McDonald, present.
Ashworth, present.
Grossman, present.
Holley, present.
Wright, present.
Let it be shown that we have a quorum. Can we all stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge?
But let's just... To the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see. Consent agenda, do I have any motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment. We don't have listed here our zoning map amendment, which we'd like to add to our discussions tonight, so we ask for that and make a motion to approve with that amendment.
Do we want that under unfinished business or new business?
No, it's unfinished. We already did a call here, and...
I second.
Okay. So we have an amendment to the consent agenda adding the...
Map.
Map, zoning map.
Twenty twenty-four dash oh two through twenty twenty-four dash eighty-nine.
Yep. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Thank you. Unfinished business, so we're going to start off with the email that Commissioner Grossman provided to everybody, it's on your table, so my understanding, you said the first four are incorporated into our chart, so we'll come back to those as we get to them.
So I really want to focus on his questions that he had on the tax maps and making sure he's aware of what parcels belong to what.
Okay.
So yes, when we had to advertise, one of our requirements is we have to notify everybody who was a property owner, and you had two buildings, two properties on tax maps, eighty-three A three dash four dash A and dash B, they're condo buildings. So we had to notify by their tax map number all of the condo owner participants in each of those buildings. And then the last one, we had a question on the Kenone property relative to where it's going to have split zoning, some of it is going to be Harbor Commercial and some of it's going to be C one. So if you flip the page, we start with the Kenone property first, it's not all of the Kenone property, we only recall that the section is particular to one. That is tax map eighty-three A three dash A dash nine, and there will be a portion along Mason, as you go from Peach Street to Nectarine, that will be part of this C one district that we carved out and identified to be that strip of land that would extend for a hundred and twenty or a hundred and forty feet into the property and retain C one zoning designation. All the rest of this parcel will be Harbor Commercial. It still retains its same one tax map parcel designation, it just will have split zoning over it.
Right, so that's the only parcel in this whole change that has now dual zoning in really the town.
I believe so.
Everything else is individually. That sort of brought up at the last meeting, so I wanted to be real clear that that parcel has dual zoning.
So then if you flip to the next page...
Before we go on.
Sure.
So that would not be CR, it will be C one?
C one, because this is, it used to be part of the historic Harbor area overlay.
Yes.
And we've made the decision that we would actually go ahead and change it to a C one zoning designation, because that's where it is along Mason on that, the old Pobby property.
Right.
Is that as well.
Okay.
And we wanted that to mimic Mason Avenue.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
The next map you see before you are the two condo buildings, which is either side of Strawberry Plaza. So the building on the left is what I'm going to talk about first, if you flip the next page. The underlying tax map parcel is eighty-three A three dash four dash A, and below is the full list of all of the condo units that have their own individual tax map identification numbers to it are all listed below. That's why there's so many of those condo units. And you may be asking why, because again, the condo units have the common real estate, that is the principal tax map parcel we listed, and then each of the condo units then gets their share of their portion of the building. And then the next page does this for the right side of Strawberry Plaza, those are all the condo units in that building. Again, the underlying tax map parcel is eighty-three A three dash four dash B, and there's the condo unit for you. Does that resolve your concerns, Paul?
Yeah, that answers my questions. All right, so I'll make a motion that we accept the zoning map amendment twenty-two dash zero two all the way through...
To eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
And it's a motion to recommend approval?
Approval, that's correct.
I have just a clarifying question, Katie, just following up on what Jim said.
We need a second.
Oh, sorry.
Yep. Second, so we have a motion and a second discussion?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, when we had one of the working group sessions with Town Council with regard to the property on the south side of Mason Avenue from Peach Street to Nectarine, Jim was saying that was originally commercial residential, correct? No? No? Okay. Because I seem to remember...
He asked if it was. He asked if it was, because across the street, that section of Mason Avenue starts a different zoning designation.
Right.
Yes.
So I'm thinking about the issue that Steve Bennett raised about multifamily versus single family. Was that not related to this parcel here, or was that, remember that discussion? And it didn't receive much support, I mean Steve's proposal.
I think that was in the Harbor area itself.
Okay, that was in Harbor itself.
Not along Mason on the south side.
Do you know what I'm talking about, John?
No, Paul's right. What Paul said is what happened, Steve's comment was for the larger part of the parcel, not that strip.
Okay. So this wouldn't do anything to affect the mixed-use residential designation Harbor Commercial?
No, it's still added, just as it would elsewhere in the C one district, where commercials on first floor residential could be on.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
The building on Strawberry, that's at Altitude, or that's Altitude and the shop next door to it, right? That I'm looking at?
No.
Across the street.
Across the street. The candy store bakery.
This is the candy store here, right?
Three thousand is where the candy store is on the corner.
Right, that's the candy store, that's the bakery, this is Altitude.
Right.
Altitude is across the street.
Yeah, that's what he's pointing to.
That's what I'm pointing to. Yeah, okay.
We're not re-zoning at Altitude.
Okay, we're just doing those condos on the other side. Got it? Okay, thank you.
Sorry, so maybe I should have said that everything that was highlighted in yellow were the condo units. Sorry, I had to pull this...
Because I know, I was confused, because I know there's condo units in that building too, right?
But that's not what's in question today.
That's what I'm asking for clarification on.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Paul just asked the question about the Strawberry Plaza buildings.
Okay, all right.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion and the second on the tax map numbers, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay? Ayes, got it. Thank you.
So, a couple items as we move into the tracking sheet. This is great work from Paul, he did put it together for us, and so we've been working at it for more than a week of going through his whole list. We have separated it out into two categories, everything that's shown in green under action is what we've accepted and made those amendments already to the master document. We have not shared a new master document with you nor with Town Council at this point. We have incorporated all of those changes that are in green. Again, they were either some grammar issues, editorial changes of little minor fixes and a versus an and, things of that nature. Anywhere where we felt that was not substantive change to the document itself, we went ahead and put that in already at this point. And there's no further action required from the Planning Commission on this. We are happy to stop and look at any one of these to get clarification for you, but that's where we are. And again, as I said at the, when you all were walking in, we are working from the cleaned-up version of the draft ordinance. That's where Paul worked from, not to say it didn't cause me a little angst, because I did all my notes in the redline version.
Well, look, the problem I have found is if you press the button to get to the clean version, it changed. And not a lot, but enough that it would...
I understand that, this has been a difficult process doing this all the way through for the last two years, yes. Okay, so with that said, does anybody have questions? I know we're flying through a little bit, but we did finish Article Three, up through Article Three at the last meeting. And yes, we have shown all of those changes that were noted at your last meeting are in this document.
So for Article Three, the comments on the map amendment one through four were all dealing with open space and having to list those particular items as...
We tacked them in at the very end, we tried and put them in in the same order.
Okay, that's fine, but I'm saying...
We can jump there if you'd like, yep.
We went there and that's the amendment.
Okay. So then that basically is putting us through page forty-eight. I do want to stop and just confirm all the pink stuff, because that is where, at the last meeting, these were things that we noted that I had flagged for myself, that needs to be part of your recommendation over to Town Council, these are the changes you wish to do, because I did feel these were substantive. So I will start on page fifteen, first pink, which was a rewording about notice requirements. I argued with Paul at the meeting, I was wrong, he was correct. It is, that is the language in there now at this point under the state statute. So we will need to make that amendment to that section of this document. Next one down.
And can you explain to me, Katie, what's the import of this change? Just, this is, to me, it just looks like just a timing schedule for the first and the second notice.
That's right, the state statute's changed into our notice requirements.
Right.
Public hearings on rezonings, map amendments, conditional use permits, special use permits, and that's it.
And is the, is the language in bold and italics in the last sentence, is that also part of the new state statute, Section 2204?
Yes.
Okay.
And I know it reads funny, that is how they write it.
Not less than seven days. Mm-hmm, okay. So that means that a public hearing can be held not less than seven days, right? So it can be held two...
Notice has to go out seven days, and one notice goes out seven days before, the other one could go out four weeks before.
Right, but so this means that not less than seven days, the public hearing can be held a month afterwards, right?
No.
No?
No.
Shall be held not less than...
So again, I would have to put a legal ad in the paper and say, this coming Friday...
Two legal.
Yep.
Two legal ads.
And I would have to do another round of legal before you could hold a public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
And worst case, if I got my first one in, it would give a month's potential, excuse me, before you could do your public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
No more than that.
Right. Okay.
Okay? Okay, moving on down then, I'm going to hit page eighteen for a minute.
Katie, you're working off your clean copy, right?
Yes, the clean version.
Yeah.
So again, we are in the R one zoning district, and Paul is correct, there is a statement in the statement of intent in the R one district that has been in this ordinance pretty much since the beginning of time. I carried it forward, never proofed, wrote right out there. I don't know where it came from, because it doesn't reference back to what it says either. And basically, it's, the reference was indicating, which states, "These commercial activities are characterized by heavy traffic, noise, and congestion of people and passenger vehicles and by large office buildings and retail establishments." And then it's basically saying, these are the things we do not want in the residential district that are in the C one district. And it's saying this came right out of the C one section of the zoning ordinance. It's not there, didn't happen. So Paul has made a suggestion that we do this, he is suggesting that we strike that wording, and we add in "and to restrict all activities of a commercial nature known as commercial districts C one, C two, and C three, which are characterized by heavy traffic, noise, and congestion of people and passenger vehicles and by large office buildings and retail establishments." So again, all we're doing in the statement of intent is basically saying, this is meant to be a residential district, and all the uses that we have in the C one, C two, C three, we really don't want in the residential district. And that's what we're doing here, is our statement of intent. So if everybody's good with that, that would also again be something we would need to propose for amendment.
Is that, should that be "commercial nature," known or no? In those words?
Known is fine, we can add an "and" at the end of "known."
Where is that word?
"And to restrict all activities of a commercial nature..."
Where?
"...known..."
Oh, no, okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
Okay? And then at the last meeting as well, Paul referenced the fact that we listed all the criteria for bed and breakfast in the various applicable zoning districts that would be allowed in. He suggested that we move that over to its own Section Four as a criteria. We concur with that, and so yes, again, that would need to be an amendment from you guys, a recommendation to amend. We will move all of those criteria. So we'll still leave bed and breakfast as a use, as a conditional use option, but we'll put all the criteria over in a new section in Section Four. And we've done this already, I just don't remember what the section number is off the top of my head.
Four point one five.
Four point one five, there we go. Okay? Want to turn the page?
So before we go, yeah, so we're talking about taking that reference out of Section Three, out of R one?
We're talking of removing the criteria of a bed and breakfast.
Right.
Meaning the owner must occupy the residence, blah, blah, blah. All that, so that criteria will now show up everywhere we've got standards and regulations and performance regulations, which is all now in Article Four.
Okay.
So that's where we're going to move that, we're going to indicate that bed and breakfast in compliance with the requirements of Article four point one five, whatever that section is, that's what we're going to tell them, that's where you go find all the criteria for bed and breakfast.
Okay.
And we will do that not only in R one, but anywhere else that a bed and breakfast is allowed as a use. We will include that language saying, go find the criteria over here. Okay? Everybody good with page one? I know that's a lot, we've been through this, but...
We'll take the last one, item page twenty?
Page, that's on the top of page two.
Okay.
Right?
All right.
So page twenty. This, again, I'm still in the R one zoning district, and Paul had made the suggestion, and he's absolutely right, we need to give reference that we moved all the development standards, where we have the nice pictures of what architectural standards should be there in the district outside of the historic district. We should include a sentence to tell you where to go find those now. So yes, the development standards are found in Section four point one two. And so we will be making that editorial change all the way through this document, and everywhere where they have developmental standards that got moved to Section Four, we will include that clause under each one of these additional regulations or other regulations. Okay? Page twenty-four. We're now in the CR district. Nope, I jumped to page twenty-three, so sorry. Okay, in the table first, I just want to talk really quick, and I know it's not in pink, I just wanted to let you know that yes, we agree with you, Paul, so your table, when you finally see this, is going to look a little smaller for the multifamily project development, because we did take Paul's note of moving the notation as it relates to townhouses, specifically the maximum development of a townhouse dwelling unit, and we moved that down under additional development requirements. So that's going to move into just a slightly different section. I just don't want anybody freaking out when you see the table for the first time, it's going to look a lot smaller. Okay, with that said, we are now to page twenty-four, and that is in the CR district. And he is correct, this one did not include the language of uses which are customary, accessory, and clearly incidental, subordinate to the principal use and structure that we have in every other zoning district. We didn't have it in this one, we need to add it into this one. So again, that would be an amendment from you guys recommending that. Under three point five, commercial district C one. And on page twenty-six, again, adding that reference to our developmental standards and where they can be found now in Article Four. Just so you're seeing, we're being consistent. The next one, again, was under three point eight on page twenty-nine. We're adding that same language there. And just so you know what zoning district we're in, we're in the commercial district C three, that's getting added there. Did we not add this in yet? No, we didn't, okay. I'm going to pause, because I missed something on the chart we should have added in, page thirty. And if I'm going to back up one page, the district we're in is commercial harbor, and again, it's in the statement of intent. A is fine, the first paragraph of A is fine, that gives us the statement of intent for commercial harbor. The second paragraph, I think, is not necessary any longer here. "Any new development shall provide and encourage public access to the water's edge, as well as emphasize the pedestrian environment throughout the harbor. The south side of the Mason Avenue shall provide a visually inviting connection to the harbor via continuous environments for multimodal means of transportation and connect to the other existing and future links to Cape Charles and environs." So that language got picked up and carried forward back in C one as it relates to this mixed main street area. The only other parcel that has this commercial harbor that might have a need for that is the old Pobby property, which is again the property right on Mason Avenue, that's vacant, that's owned by John Kemp, across from the main part of Mason Avenue, near the entrance to the harbor. So when I reread this again, I felt maybe it's no longer needed under commercial harbor, since most of this does not have that Mason Avenue frontage, with the exception of that one parcel right at the entrance. We can leave it if you would care to. Your call.
What's the negative impact if we just leave it?
I won't say any negative impact, it just may not be applicable to most of the parcels in commercial harbor zone, that's all.
Well, if it doesn't apply to most, it applies to some, so I would say we leave it in.
That's fine.
I agree with Shannon.
Okay, so we will leave it. Thank you. Okay. And our next one, that's it for page two. And now moving us down to page three, page thirty-three.
Well, did we skip over the indoor recreational business on three ten D?
That's where we are now.
That's where we are now. Oh. I skipped ahead on the page.
Yeah, mine too.
On the table. You must have two different tables.
No.
I printed one out before I came, and I thought I was missing that. So you just, all I'm saying is, when you get to an item, just say what the paragraph number is.
Sure. So again, I'm on page three, starting, it's page thirty. Again, I have nothing in pink. Do any of you want to talk about any of those until we get down to the one item that is in pink, which is on page thirty-three, and it's three point one zero point D. And again, that puts us into the Harbor Light Industrial Zoning District, just so you know that. And this was discussed at our last meeting, to add a new cup use here, indoor recreational comma business. Everybody okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have anything else on the rest of page three, I needed an amendment from you. So page four, my first one is on page forty-six. And again, this puts us into the Bay Crossing Planning Unit Development, Bay Crossing PUD. And again, this is reflective of the changes that have been going on on other sections of our zoning ordinance that impacted what was here in the Bay Crossing PUD. So again, the items listed as not to be applicable from C one, they have changed. So basically, item number thirty-five will be removed, which was giving us reference back to what was in C one and what uses they would or would not have. And so what we have done is now item C, conditional uses, is now item E, to be consistent with everything else we're doing.
Where are you, Katie? I'm sorry, it's really tough to keep track of everything.
Page forty-six, three point one four B.
Sixty-nine.
Where it says permitted uses, this one looks different than most of the other ones, it's paragraphs.
All right, hold on, wait till he gets to it.
Go ahead.
Okay. So again, the way it reads right now, it says, "The following uses shall be permitted by right, subject to the yard high coverage of density requirements contained herein. All uses permitted by right and as accessory uses in the R three district, except for short-term rentals and electric vehicle charging stations. Notwithstanding the foregoing, the following items from the zoning warrant shall not be applicable." Basically, this was the developer, the property owner, advancing this PUD and saying, "I will not have these uses ever be allowed in this zoning district."
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And he said he was referencing item thirty-five from the C one district, which basically was a reference to the Akamak Plantation PUD, and the use is allowed under their special commerciality district. We have stricken that. Because that is no longer part of our zoning ordinance at all, at this point. And then we also referenced item C from the C one district. And again, item C, it was conditional uses under our current zoning ordinance, that is now item E under this proposed ordinance of conditional uses. And so to be clear, what are the conditional uses? So I come down to item C below, it tells you what are the conditional uses that were allowed under this PUD before, which were all the things that were listed in the C one, C two, and C three districts, and also within the R three districts, short-term rentals including subletting of units will be less than blah, 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 there's a whole language there. One of the things that we needed to clean up on this section is it was going to restrict charging stations of not being one of the allowed conditional uses in this zoning, in this particular PUD. And you have to know this PUD, that's actually one of his primary intents, is to have charging, electric charging stations as his commercial enterprise on this property. So we need to make that correction here, so that he can do electric vehicle charging stations, okay?
So, just to be clear.
Yep.
Item number thirty-five is dropping, item C is dropping as well?
Well, it's no longer C, it's E.
Okay, so you're going to change it to E?
Yeah.
Okay.
There were some things that changed, yes.
Okay, that's...
Okay? Okay. Okay. That's it. Did I get, yeah, forty-nine gets me through there. So I'm going to stop there for a second to make sure everybody's good, these were all the changes that we went through once before.
So is that a commercial entity for the electronic charging, vehicle charging for the PUD? Or is it meant to be for the residents who live in the PUD?
When he proposed the PUD and went forward with it and put it as a use, one, it is a commercial use, it can be for the residents to use, or could be from any member of the public to use it as well.
Got it, okay.
So it was meant to be one of the commercial uses.
Yes.
Got it, okay.
Okay, so I'm now going to flip you all the way to the end of your tracking chart, page eight, because I want to go pick up the rest of Paul's comments that were on his map and things, that reference some issues relative to the open space district. So at the bottom of page eight, and Paul was absolutely correct, is, we did talk about this when we were doing the map changes, is we needed to add some additional uses to the open space district, specifically as it relates to the Port Authority property, which is where the spoil sites go, and that's the big parcel as you come into town, the big buffer area, I don't know what we'll call that, anyway. We are rezoning that to open space, because it's currently zoned industrial, heavy industrial, and so we wanted to move that over to open space. The issue was, we actually did not have a use for spoils to actually be allowed in open space. So we are proposing that we add spoil sites as a conditional use in the open space zoning district. Everybody understand? Questions? Bill, you got a look on your face.
No.
Okay, just making sure.
This is my resting look.
And so again, we had several other parcels that fell into that category. The next one was over where we have proposed rezoning some town property, to go to open space, over by the wastewater treatment plant. It's a parcel at this point that has a couple of Connex boxes over there, which we're using for our public works department and storage for the town facilities. And so we, again, there was no provision in our open space for those sorts of structures, for municipal structures, to be on open space properties. So we are proposing to add language that we can have municipal storage in open space, and that would be a by right use.
All right, so that, that reference to the map should not be fifteen, but should be fourteen A.
Is that what it is, sorry, you're doing this fast.
Fourteen A.
Fourteen A, okay.
Let me be clear, the second one is correct, A-15.
No, okay.
That one's correct, because that was the tower that we had to add as conditional use in open space. No, the.
No, the communications tower.
Okay, so.
Then actually, then that, then I got you, Paul, I hear you, A-14 is where the existing tower is, we were proposing the tower, the communications tower, that should come in as a conditional use permit.
Correct.
Okay.
Municipal storage in open space, you're asking us to make that a by right?
A by right use.
So John can put boxes anywhere he wants in open space, on his own decision?
Not anywhere in open space, only a property owned by the town of Cape Charles, in open space, yes.
Where are the other open space spaces owned by Cape Charles? The corner of, the corner of.
The park.
The park?
Central Park is open space. And we do have a storage unit over there.
I did?
I think it was before contained within our, it was, yeah, we sold that, we sold that with utilities, but we were going to, we were going to build a storage area adjacent to the current bathroom to put stuff that was in there.
And Katie, along those lines, can you just be a little more specific, is where's the open space as you drive into town? You said there was an area when you first drive into town.
If you look at your map, on the back of.
Garden is open space.
Yep.
And you're coming into town, that long ring rectangle, that is where all the spoils, the dredge spoil sites are placed, when we're dredging the harbor, and some other spots in town.
That's where the current storage facility is, as well?
It's not a storage facility, it's a giant hole in the ground where we're dumping spoils.
It's not so much a hole now.
No, it's now a now.
Yeah, it's a big pile of sand.
That's not municipal storage, that is a spoils site, that's not owned by the town.
No, I'm talking about the long-term storage facility.
That's not the long-term storage, that's not what I'm talking about.
That's what I'm asking.
The Port Authority.
He's asking for the municipal land.
We're in fourteen A.
Okay, no, you asked coming into town, your question was, what parts were you describing coming into town?
Right.
That's what I'm talking to about. But that's not owned by the town, that's not municipal storage, it's spoil sites.
Katie, I think we want to know, what open spaces is a town owned that you could possibly pop a Connex box on, without asking anyone for permission?
And I'm telling you, Central Park, and the property that is now owned just by the town, adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant, because all of the utilities of wastewater and water have been sold to Virginia American Water.
Right.
So those are no longer town owned, they don't come up as town-owned property, that's it, that's it.
So the lot on the way into town, on the right-hand side before FIG, that is not open space, you could not just pop a Connex box on that?
No.
Okay. I think that's what we're.
I didn't know that's what you were talking about, no, that is not open space.
Okay.
Yeah.
The only other place would be the beach.
No, you got, you got the, over by the nature preserve, that's all open space.
But that's not owned by the town, that's not owned by the town.
That was the question, owned by the town.
Yes. You're correct, down on the beach, that is, the beachfront is all town owned, that's correct. And that is, that is open space.
So can I just go back through our table here? For A-6, we said.
A-6. Oh, at the beginning, that's sorry, Port Authority, yes.
We were going to make the spoil site as conditional.
Yes.
The second one, A-15, is the tower, and we're going to make that conditional as well?
Yes.
Okay. And then the third one, for the storage, that was a by right?
That's what I'm recommending, yes.
Why wouldn't it be a conditional use?
Because it's town-owned property, if the town wants it, you think they're not going to say yes at a conditional use process? To some extent, what are we trying to achieve? Seriously? So you can make them go through the hoops, they won't, they would have to do the public hearing process, but then the town council gets to vote on it. And it's town property, if that's what they wanted, they filed the application, they're probably going to do it.
If I'm the only one that it sits uneasy with, then I will forego.
No, I agree with Shannon, what if it's just a bad idea? What if people on, some people on planning commission and town council disagree and think it's a bad idea? Why shouldn't it go through the conditional use process?
He works for the town council, they have the final vote.
You wouldn't have put it forward if it did come from the town council.
I wouldn't be town manager very long if I was doing stuff like that.
Yeah.
You may not be here very long, John, right? I mean, you may, I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about future town managers, I mean, why, why shouldn't it be? I agree.
You can make that your recommendation, that's why we're having this conversation right now.
It seems to me that if an open space, if you want to put anything else on an open space, it's a conditional use, but if I want to pop a Connex box on it, I can just do it.
Not true. So again, under the open space, you've got page forty-five, section 3.13 is the open space district. All the permitted uses, non-commercial recreational uses, uses which are primarily open air, swimming pools, court sports such as but not limited tennis, volleyball, croquet, and basketball. Picnic shelters, piers and docks, equipment stores, buildings associated with permanent recreational uses. Parking areas associated with permanent recreational uses, retention areas and streets, public utility facilities and public amenities such as restrooms, bathhouses, town, et cetera. Those are all allowed by right.
But those are all standard open space uses.
I'm just making you aware, because you made a statement that just wasn't fully accurate, I wanted to make sure we're all looking at the same document.
All right. We probably need to add to number three, pickleball. Because we currently are doing that as part of Central Park.
All right, but it says such as but not limited to.
Yeah, I'm okay with.
We talked about pickleball once before.
Okay. I don't think it's required to listen.
It was an open.
It's a court sport.
Every night, yeah.
It's a court sport.
Yeah. It is a court sport, yes.
So, does the commission wish to make that municipal storage by, by conditional use permit or by right? What say you?
Well, you want to make, amend the motion, we have a motion on the table to accept zoning, now we're changing.
Well, you don't actually have a motion on the floor yet to accept zoning, right now, we're just walking through all of this.
Yeah, we're just, we put it on the floor.
Okay.
Now we're going through amendments, and this table will ultimately be amended to the motion, right? So if you want.
So you need to make a motion to add this to, so all these changes would be part of that motion?
Yes.
You don't need to make a motion for each of them.
I don't, I think we ought to.
Well, I think you're going to have a difference of opinion on this, by right to.
I think right now, let's see if there's a consensus, should it change or should it not change?
Yeah, I think it's fine.
Do you want it by right, or do you think it should go?
I think there's enough control with the town.
Okay, I'll make a motion to make municipal storage in open spaces subject to conditional use under 3.13D.
For?
To address municipal storage.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, further discussion.
So your argument, you said, nothing's going to be done with it unless the town council says do it.
So I also want to, I also want to clarify, you're throwing off the term Connex boxes, okay? But that's not what this says, this says storage.
Storage.
So you mean any storage, I'm going to have to go through a conditional use permit. So that's, that's kind of.
On land on by the town.
Yeah, and we're all, we're talking about, we're talking about three places, the Central Park, the beach, and that one little plot right next to the wastewater treatment, that's what we're talking about.
And you're not going to be able to do storage without the town council's property?
If I was to store anything on those lands, I got to go through a cop process.
That's what, that's what we're calling.
He's going through town council whenever he is doing any infrastructure work of that nature.
That's, even it's by right, is my point, is he can't do it unless it goes to the town council.
Well, if he's spending money, he's going to have to come to town council.
Right, right.
Right, so, you know, there's two Connex boxes on that plot right now, next to the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah.
Council had to approve repurchasing those Connex boxes, at that time, I told him I was going to flip them.
And it's by right now, it's by right now?
Well, this, that's only district doesn't exist right now.
Okay. All I'm saying is, is the procedure wouldn't change if it's, well, if it's by, if you have to get a cop, then you have to go through the regular roll every time, even though the council has probably ordered you or given you the okay to build it.
Correct, that's, that was the point.
Right.
But that, but that would mean we'd have to have a public hearing, and have to come to planning commission first, and then we'd have to make the recommendation, and we'd have to get another public hearing with the town council.
Understood.
Okay? All right.
So as long, I, I think I am fine with it being by right, as long as it has a process, there is some control measure, and if that's in place, then I think that would have been great to talk about at the beginning of this question, but I'm okay. To use Central Park as the example, we were storing stuff in our, in our pump house that we don't own, so we're creating, we're upgrading the bathroom, CCP it, and we're going to build a storage area, fenced storage area around it, to facilitate our needs there. Under this proposal, I would have to get a cop to do that, instead of just a brief meeting with council. Actually, council didn't have to approve that when CCP was paying for it, but I agreed with council on that, and those things happen.
And if it was by right, there would be no, like, public hearing or any type of procedural, right? So there would not be, if it was by right.
Yeah, but there are some controls in place, because the town council has to approve the cost.
Sure. Yeah, but that's for, yeah.
Well, it's in this case, Central Park committee is paying for the cost, so there is no cost aspect coming to the town. They have to just coordinate with the town staff as to what they're cooking.
Okay, so we still have a motion and a second.
I'm changing this to using a cop, is that the, okay.
That's the, that's the motion on the floor.
So I was saying, no.
All right, I'll call for a vote.
I'll call for a vote.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
There you go.
Okay, and then the last one, just because I'm here, so I'm just going to tackle it really quickly. All of you are aware, the town council did vote these short-term rental ordinance in at their last meeting. We do have reference to a short-term rental, I had to put a placeholder in, because we were running, you know, simultaneous tracks of zoning ordinance action here. So yes, this will be, the town council will be incorporating their amended short-term rental ordinance into this final product, when it's all said and done as well. So we just wanted to alert you of that change, that will be coming through the town council side of things.
And that will not be coming back to planning commission, correct?
No.
Right.
Okay, I'm going to bring us back to page four. Now, this is page four.
Page four of those.
Page four of your tracking sheet, sorry.
What page number you told me?
Page forty-nine. So we are now starting new articles that we have not reviewed and made comment on. Okay. So in Article 4, page forty-nine, section 4.0. B8, this is dealing in the home-based occupation section. Again, there was a, in our definition of home occupation, we had it what we do feel is a criteria or standard, and it should actually be sitting in this list of home occupation requirements. And that specifically said, "The home occupations must be constructed wholly within the building or structure, and shall not exceed fifty percent of the total floor area." We have stricken the rest of that definition clause, because we do feel it's already been covered under the criteria listed within this section of items one and two. Everybody okay with that?
So this, this is just adding another number here, eight.
That's correct, it's adding a criteria that was tucked away into definition.
Into definition, yeah.
Okay. Everything else coming down to?
So I, I have on four C, in our October thing, we said, if you go down, it says, zoning affidavit assigned, zoning clearance may be granted, we said shall be granted, and we agreed on that.
Okay. He's on page forty-nine, item C.
Four C.
Middle of that, or the second line of that sentence. Zoning clearance may, he's indicating it should be shall. We can add that to the list.
Is that an amendment, or amendment to chapter, or?
Yes, I am. It will show in pink. Okay. Anybody else have any changes before I move us down? You're going to see there's one that's in a white color called discussion. Again, this was raised by Paul on page fifty-seven, under section 4.32. D2.
Okay, before?
Okay.
Uh, four. Section 4.1. E12. Again, non-conforming, a lot smaller. Again, non-conforming lots, model in fifty-six hundred square feet in the R one district, total footprint area, all necessary building block coverage shall not exceed ten percent. In our October thing, we said delete that.
All right, get us to that section again.
It's page fifty-one.
Yep.
Page fifty-one.
And so again, we're exceptions to the regulation, section four point one, we're in E twelve.
That was agreed to, to delete that. That was in October.
And I'm not sure why we would've agreed to delete that standard because it's in your current ordinance today and it deals with the smaller, non-conforming lots. And how much lot coverage they can have with structure.
But this is on accessory buildings, right?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
An accessory building. So if I have a four thousand square foot lot. It says the total footprint of all accessory building, lot coverage should not exceed ten percent.
Seems to make sense to me.
So that's four hundred square.
That's four hundred square feet, yeah.
Bill, can you recall any of the context of the conversation?
It doesn't say it on here. I, it just said, just says, exceptions to the regulation, item E twelve, delete this item. And it just has the date, didn't have an explanation to it. So I just, I throw it out. I don't.
I'd recommend that we just.
Okay.
So Katie, I just have a couple of questions, starting with B one and trailer parking.
Yes.
Yeah. So, storage of recreational.
So again, we're on page fifty, everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Four point one.
Section four point one, B one. Storage of travel or recreational trailers in an enclosed accessory building is permitted, provided that no living quarters are maintained within the trailer. So, when we say maintained, does that mean so long as someone's not living in the trailer or?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Can we clarify that?
Yeah, it is a little.
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause maintained means I just take care of it.
Yeah.
And I don't think that's what you meant. Occupied?
Used, yeah.
Used, occupied?
Yes, no living quarters are used, or something like that. Yeah, I agree. It maintains the offered word.
Right.
Yeah. So you want versus maintained, you want occupied or used?
Yeah.
Occupied.
Occupied, I think it's, I think it's better.
A person, if they do have a travel trailer in a storage unit, would maintain it.
Absolutely, they would.
But not use it in a storage unit, yes.
Correct. Um, okay. And on C, structures permitted above height limitations. The last sentence. No. Penthouses or roof shall be allowed for the purpose of providing additional floor space. So, so this could be. I mean, I guess my question is, would this prohibit someone from having a, like a commercial establishment? And having the roof of that establishment be used for dining or a, a place where drinks could be served?
Again, we'd have to go back to the zoning districts and see what those height limitations are and the floor requirements are. So for example, in many of the C, in the residential districts, you can only have two and a half stories. You cannot have a three-story residential home.
Okay.
And so we don't want you creating that space thinking you can go ahead and tuck another whole floor in by raising the height or the roof allowances.
Okay.
I can't remember what it is in the C one district off the top of my head.
But, but I'm not talking about like, I, I'm, I'm just talking about.
A roof patio or something.
Yeah, a roof patio or something like that.
Which we do allow those all the way through the C one district.
Bill, then this seems to be a little contradictory then.
Again, you gotta go back to the, the primary zoning district in which it's allotted in and check out what the height requirements are. And the number of stories that, that may or may not be allowed within that zoning district. So you asked about C one. I can tell you right now, I approved on the old hardware building that has been converted now to, what's their company name? The distillery. They got a rooftop bar.
Yeah, they do. But it doesn't, it's not above the height?
Yeah.
Thing, it's kind of above.
Right, but I'm not talking about floor space. I'm talking about whether or not that is coterminous with the use of the penthouse or the roof.
But this is structures permitted above height.
Height limit, so you're saying that this just has to, that this just goes towards determining the overall floor space?
That's, that's correct. So primarily, it's meant, we're not going to count against you in the height allowances if you put all of your AC units on your roof.
I see, okay.
So I'm not counting the AC of like, oh, you now gotta shrink your building by three feet to accommodate your AC units going up there.
I see.
I'm not doing that to you.
I see, okay.
Go ahead.
Well, if they wanted to put a, a bar with a cover on it, they would still have to just come and get permission.
If it was enclosed, that would be part of the structure. If it's open air, we have several of those, those are above the height, they, they can be allowed. Yes.
And that would be subject to a cup or no?
No, it is an exception to the regulation. It's one of the things that can be allowed when they come through, through site plan review.
Okay.
Well, a cup would be needed if they wanted to, to be in.
If they were going to be enclosed and exceed the height limitations, then actually even before cup, it may require variance to even try and exceed the height limitations.
Right. Okay, and, okay, all right.
Are we good?
G, G two. Again, just for clarification purposes.
So again, you're on page fifty-two.
Right.
This is dealing with fences and walls?
Fences and walls must be constructed of appropriate materials. I know other where, like, I know in the next sentence, it talks about. Materials both contempor, traditional, may be used in traditional si, styles, and then there are other types of materials that can't be used. I guess the appropriate materials language is referring to those next two sentences? When you talk about appropriate materials, it's not, it's not a category in and of itself. Fences and walls must be constructed of appropriate materials. And those appropriate materials, I'm assuming, would be wood, wrought and cast iron, vinyl, tubular metal.
That's correct.
In traditional styles.
As well as the subsequent sentence, which talks about certain materials, would not be allowed in certain districts.
Okay. Okay. G.
And I, I don't wanna have you lose sight. It has two additional paragraphs coming after. It talks about chain link fencing.
Yeah.
Where that's acceptable.
Right.
And then also about where you, how you're placing it with the finished side out, et cetera.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, you have an overriding condition with the historic.
Yeah, right.
That's correct. You have to, if it's property in the historic district overlay, it's gotta fall under the requirements of the historic district overlay.
They have two materials.
Okay, and. This is, this is a, this is called my SOG three, commercial and industrial fences. They have to comply with residential fencing requirements and there must be a cup for any non-conforming fences. And the applicant shall demonstrate that the proposed fencing is consistent with the nature of and the security requirements of the business. So i- if someone wants to put in a non-conforming fence, does, I mean, does there have to be a security reason for putting in the non-conforming fence? Because there's an and. What if they just wanna put in a nice, non-conforming fence? Do they have to prove in the cup process that there's a security reason for putting in this non-conforming fence? Because it says the nature of and the security requirements of the business.
Again, that would be part of the, the conditional use process review and their application of the property in question and what they're trying to accomplish.
But that's what I'm asking, if, if, so, yeah.
Can't tell you that answer. That's gonna be conditional to the property that comes forward with that application for you guys to consider that.
So then it shouldn't be with the nature of or the security requirements of the business?
Would it be and/or?
And/or? Because I, I, I mean, I, I wouldn't wanna put in a non-conforming fence and have no security threats or no security issues around my building and then have to be, you know, then have to prove that there is some sort of security requirement that requires, that I have to, criteria that I have to meet.
Change this section, which has been an existing section of your zoning ordinance, again, since the beginning?
It's just, I know there's a lot of those. I'm just, I'm, I was just confused by it, but, because, you know, there are different properties, have different natures and different purposes and different security issues, so.
It could be relative to the concrete plant.
Right.
Which is an industrial project.
Right.
Property. It could be Waco chemicals.
Mm-hmm.
They don't have a fence right now around their property at all. It could be one of the bars. They're in commercial.
I think we're close there and I agree with you, Bill. My reading of this is that a security requirement is a requirement.
Yeah.
If, if, if you don't have a bona fide security requirement, if you can't prove that in the cup process, this could be denied. That's the way I would read it.
Me too.
But that's, I mean, that's what fences are for.
Yeah, I'm saying, is that all that bad?
So why would you put a fence up if?
Not always, not always.
But, so yes, if, if you wanted to relax that than, than putting.
And part of it comes from, do you really want eight-foot fences without having a security component associated with it? Why else do you need an eight-foot fence?
Then you could put the or.
But that might not be the non-conforming.
Right.
It has to be a stone fence. It might be anything. I don't. Doesn't seem like putting and/or seems like it's terrible.
If you guys wish to do that, let me know that. Say it now.
I hear a suggestion. I'll agree with and/or.
And/or, I agree.
We have to give Bill one minute.
What's that?
We have to give you one minute.
Ah, that's, that's two, that's two. I had, I had two.
Oh, we gotta take this one back.
Okay. And I, I just have one more question on J one D.
And we're on page fifty-three, dealing with accessory dwellings.
Yeah.
Physical characteristics.
Right, uh, so, located in, dwelling should be located in accessory building. Accessory building shall not have the appearance of a single family dwelling. What, what's, what's, what's the thinking behind that?
They do not want an accessory structure, building, uh, to be viewed as a house. There is already a house on the property. And that should be the house.
Six hundred square foot.
They don't want it to look like another house?
That's correct. They do not want the appearance of two homes on a lot.
Because?
They do not want two homes on a lot.
Well, maybe, but, but I can have a garage that looks like a home, right?
No.
No?
That's an accessory building.
Okay, well, I can, I can have an office, right?
Not to look like a home.
So you just want me, you don't want it to look like a house?
No.
Okay, all right, fine. All right.
Anybody else have issues on page fifty-three? I'm gonna flip this through a couple times. Any issues on fifty-four? Fifty-five?
Which?
Or fifty-six?
I see you got, I'm looking here at your, your, the sheet here.
I got a discussion item. That's page fifty-seven. All right.
Where are we now?
Okay, page fifty-seven.
Yep.
And this is item four point three two, D two. And again, this is dealing with conditional use permits and it's down under D, page fifty-seven, and it's item number two. Paul asked this question when he sent his spreadsheet over to me. Are we really expecting the zoning administrator to notify town council when cup approaches one year? This is in here because, yes, we actually do feel that's important, especially if no progress, no momentum has occurred on a cup being implemented. We think it's important for you to know because cups are not trivial items. They're important items. They're relevant items. We want you to be aware. If a project has stalled, should we be doing something about that? Is there some underlying reason that my office may not be aware of? We have not heard from the property owner. So yes, we want to ensure that council is kept informed of those things and, uh, to see if there is some underlying reason that we should start reaching out to consider an, an extension of that cup. Because if it's not implemented.
How do you notify us? Through your weekly reports?
Um, I would probably would reach out to you. It could be through weekly reports. I may tell the town manager about it. We keep track of whether people are actually doing the cups.
I guess in my mind, I, I was thinking you'd approach town council door meeting, which I've never seen, but.
Um, actually, you have seen it because we have, we've kept you on notice, everything going on one fig street. There is a cup. We kept you on notice with the cup gonna, going to expire.
I'm asking you how.
We made you aware through the weekly report.
Okay, that's all I'm asking.
And then you were CC on all the correspondence to the property.
If it's through weekly reports, that's fine. I'm, uh, what I was looking to hear is approaching town council door meeting. I'm not, I don't recall ever coming up.
It doesn't happen that way. But, but I do agree with Katie. It's important to know this.
Okay, that's fine.
Because otherwise, council is gonna find out when it expires and it'd be nice if you had advanced warning.
And I'm, I'm okay if that's the weekly reports. That's fine.
Okay, so no change needed. Okay. I did not have anything else on the rest of our tracking sheet, page four. So that gets me through page sixty. Anybody have any other issues between fifty-seven and sixty?
What sections are those?
Section four.
So again, page fifty-eight deals with landscaping and streaming regulations. And it also then deals with outdoor lighting. And that continues on page sixty-one where we do have an item four discussion and amendment. So page sixty-one, item four point four point four, which are the standards under outdoor lighting, and I'm directing you to item D. So Paul raised that this item limits light pole height for parking lots to twenty-five feet. And we did discuss this and we were doing and proposing this, this new section of outdoor lighting. He notes that this puts us in conflict with another section of our ordinance, four point five, G eight, which is under our parking and other landscaping requirements, which do include parking lots. Which had a limitation of saying twenty feet if it only had a hun, hundred or less spaces, or thirty-five feet for greater than a hundred spaces. And need to rectify what we want. Here is what I would propose, that we actually take it out of four point five, G eight. That twenty feet for hundred spaces or less, actually just push them and say refer to be standard now. Now that we actually have outdoor lighting standards, I would say under our parking regs, we just refer over here for any of the lighting standards relative to parking lots.
So delete from four five, G eight.
Yes, and not delete it, but, but change those references so that we are referring it right here to four point four point four D. To be in compliance with those requirements.
Instead of the twenty-five feet?
Yes. No, it still would be twenty-five feet in this section. It's just not in four point five, point G, point eight, which we can go look at that here in a second. Where it does give me different pole heights, I'm taking all that out and just saying, go look at four point four point four D. That's the standard for whatever pole heights might be required in parking lots.
So would you, on four, five, G eight, would you leave it to say parking area shall have adequate lighting if the facilities are to be used at night, provided such lighting shall be blah, blah, blah? End it the first period there and delete light poles?
With, yes.
In compliance with, and then are you gonna leave the all lighting is to be compliant with dark skylighting standards or is that covered in four four?
That all comes out. Everything is gonna be covered under four point four. Those are your lighting standards for the outdoors. Okay?
Sounds reasonable to me.
Yep. Okay.
So Katie, on, are we done with that?
Yep.
On four point four five, um, plan required, a photometric plan. Uh, that indicates all outdoor lighting fixtures, excuses of streetlights. I have, I have no idea how to measure zero point five foot candle, so, um, you know, maybe this isn't an issue. But when, when is a, is a plan required? Is it required for holiday lighting under, under this provision or is it, what, what type of lighting are we talking? What type of outdoor lighting fixtures are we talking about?
So again, if you are going to develop a piece of property.
Mm-hmm.
You are required to give me a site plan.
Right.
And you will have to address as part of that site plan submission to my office, several elements contained in the zoning law. The use, type of structure, if you're going to have landscaping, what, what does that look like? If you're gonna have fencing, I need to know that too. If you're gonna have an accessory structure, you gotta tell me about that as well. And then you're also. And then you're also gonna have to give me your lighting plan, and tell me what are you doing with your outdoor lights on this property? That's for commercial property, that's relevant. Residential, no, I do not require any outdoor lighting plan from a residential structure.
Okay, because it says the section's applicable to all zoning districts.
That's correct, but again, under the R one, we do not require a lighting plan for any of the residential properties. Again, you can only ensure that you don't have spotlights or floodlights, you cannot be in, in, in non-conformance with the outdoor lighting requirements. Meaning, we no longer want light to spill over onto somebody else's property, of you shining your light into somebody else's house.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think I really have that problem in this community, but, again, that's why we finally adopted a lighting standard to make it really clear.
And what are wall pack lights?
Uh, so I'm gonna pick on McDonald's, parties, they have wall pack lights. They're square lights, they usually come in a pack of two, or I'll pick one in a beach market. For a long time, you may have seen as you're driving out of town, the beach market first opened.
Yeah.
The lights over that side door, where they show them right near your face, in your car. That's a wall pack. They actually did not have it directed downward, and so we had them change that and direct it downward, no longer shines out to the road. That's a wall pack.
Okay. It's not defunct, that's why I asked, okay.
Okay. Moving on. Um, the next item I have is gonna be under sixty-four, page sixty-four. Everybody ready, it's in table four point five, which is our minimum parking space requirements table. Item A one, which is our residential, single, right now it's a single-family, in that A one area, Paul has indicated we need to add duplexes somewhere in that, that list here. So we are proposing to do that, um, under, it'd be a new item eleven in that list, called duplexes in the R one. And it, built after the date of adoption of this ordinance, we'll fill in that date when that happens, uh, will require off-street parking. As you may remember, we also include that in that language as a use as well, that it requires, uh, off-street parking.
So you're gonna add it as an actual item, item on two or whatever?
We'll add it as, as a new category eleven, yes. Because right now, that table goes from A, number one, through ten, we're adding number eleven in there.
And how many spaces are you?
Uh, requires off-street parking.
Off-street, good.
Yes.
Katie, number nine, should not have if in there. Um, in this town, bed and breakfast owners are required to live on the premises. It's not if. So I would say plus two spaces for the owner landlord, living on premises.
Did we not change?
We changed that, we changed that to either the, either the owner or a manager.
Or manager.
And I still think the if needs to come out, for the owner manager lives on the premises.
Okay.
Yeah.
So again, under, Jack, just your catch, this is, is four point five, under the residential area, number nine. We're deleting if. Everybody agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, thank you.
So, back to the duplexes, is it gonna say two spaces per, per property or something like that? You said it, off-street parking, but it, I could have one and still be on a duplex and be compliant, right? If, with the word off-street parking, it doesn't say how many.
You, you are correct, and so part of this is, we have not specified how much off-street parking would be required for duplex dwelling unit.
So is that a discussion we should have here, is that something you're gonna recommend to us, or how would you like to handle that?
Seems like it's the same as multifamily, right? If it's one bedroom, it's one space, if it's more than one bedroom, it's two spaces.
Well, the problem with that is, is that, let's take Strawberry Street, right, in, right, phone, Strawberry, um, north of Tazewell.
Mm-hmm.
You got three duplexes there, if you had two pa- two, uh, cars per duplex, they couldn't park there.
Right.
I mean, they couldn't, they couldn't park in front of their, their building. I mean, you couldn't get six cars in there. I mean, twelve cars.
So we say one space per duplex?
Well, she said off-street parking.
Is this new construction?
This would be for any new, because right now, we do not allow any new duplexes in town, it's not in our current zoning ordinance. So what you're talking about are items that have been grandfathered in, or legal non-conforming uses of, of structures. So this is new property being developed, we would allow duplexes to be considered, but they would have to, to, uh.
Built after twenty twenty-four.
Provide off-street parking for those duplex units. So, if you, if you're asking me, here's my, my answer, because it's, it's two housing units, they're duplexes, side by side. Um, and so yes, I would say one per family residence, um, or if we follow the single-family residence, it says two spaces per dwelling unit in all districts other than the R one. Otherwise, we have no requirement under R one. So we can hold new duplexes to a standard greater than, than just building a single-family home. So we could hold them that, say, you gotta give me four spaces on the lot for the duplex.
And is the thinking that that's where the new parking would come from, it would be on the lot?
It would have to, yes.
That would, they would have to, if they wanted a duplex unit.
They would have to design a house, a duplex, to accommodate that, or come all up in an alley.
Four seems onerous.
That, that seems pretty.
Yeah, that seems.
That, that almost seems like a deal breaker, who would want to develop multifamily housing?
And then you're gonna have so much hard scrabble surface rather than nice, pretty.
No, you, there are requirements and limitations to your paving material and your putting in parking spaces.
Okay.
No matter what, it's not pretty.
Well, cars just aren't, sorry. I think we've identified a car issue in town, and where we park them.
So the duplex would basically have to have like a garage, or a driveway, or something of that nature?
Yeah, it may not fit in, in certain blocks. You may have to have a corner lot, you may have to have an alley behind you to accommodate, otherwise, you're out of luck.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, right.
Or we can strike out allowing duplexes back into town, but that was the whole purpose of putting in different housing types.
Just in R one, right Katie?
No, no.
No, 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 there's, I mean, there's no parking requirements in R one, that you just, you just said.
That's correct.
Right, you just said.
So, for example, if you're in the R two district.
Yep.
You would have to provide two spaces per dwelling unit. That is a requirement today. In the R three district, which at this point, put that in mind, R three is now on the property that the town owns, heading out of town, old, old, that was Keith Charles' room?
Yep. Yep.
Let me do that mark.
Yeah, off, off of the Kasop Parkway, there's a town parcel near the Keck Wells, and then also there's Lance Marine's property. Um, those are our R three. Well, he's really a pud now, but, that gives the idea. So those would be required to have off-street parking.
Why, why now, as we continue to develop, do we have single-family not requiring parking in R one?
Because that has been a, the, the way this town has developed itself, is.
And I understand anything existing, but if there's empty lots that we're, we're doing new development on.
Because I don't think necessarily the lots are changing in size, and, and right now, the, the legal conforming lot size is fifty-six hundred square feet.
I'm, I'm just, I'm new to this, I'm trying to understand, I would have thought we, with all the parking issues and parking concerns that we have, we'd be asking any new development to have a driveway in it to at least park one or two cars.
Well, and we also talk a lot about affordable housing and the lack of new and affordable housing here, and the more you require onerous parking regulations, the less chance you're gonna have people coming in and building housing, right?
A lot of houses in the historic district do have a place to park.
Some, some have been able to accommodate, they have built a smaller house size to accommodate getting a driveway in, yes. But not all have done that. They've chosen a traditional house size, and they can't fit the driveway as well.
I took us on a, down a path.
No, I think this.
So I guess the question is.
Germaine and relevant.
We started by adding eleven, which was a duplex.
Which is duplexes, and do you wish to establish a standard of the number of parking spaces a duplex should have? Two per side of the duplex, one per side of the duplex?
I would say one per side of the duplex.
Yeah, I would say one.
One.
One per side.
Say one.
And then they can park on the street with extra, if it was in the, in the red.
What's that, Libby?
If we, if we did it in R one, is, can, this can be done in R one, right? With new?
For duplexes in R one, built at, that, that is a standard that Paul is proposing that we add here.
One space, one, one parking.
Sounds like everybody's agreed to, one, one parking space per side of the, for each side of the duplex, yeah.
In R, in all the residential districts?
No.
No?
Duplexes in R one district, built after the date of adoption of this ordinance, would require one parking space for each side of the duplex, off, off-street, on the lot.
Okay, what about, what about R two and R three, what do we want to do there?
You currently do not have a requirement for that, do you wish to extend it to all your residential districts?
Paul shaking his head.
Well, I'm saying now we're going back to what we started with, when we went through all this stuff.
I think this is an important issue.
So again, R two starts on page twenty, and again, we reference that duplex dwellings are permitted use provided off-street parking is provided.
So we've got it in R two.
Hold on.
You have it in R two, you have it in R three. And you have it in the CR.
But in those areas, you've, you've gotta be more likely to have a bigger piece of property.
R three, yes. Um, R two, I actually don't think I've got nothing in zoned R two at the moment.
Nothing is zoned R two.
Nothing is zoned R two.
But you're requiring off-street parking in, so you're requiring off-street parking for duplexes in all residential districts?
Anywhere we allow duplexes.
Right, but you haven't specified the number in any of them. You just said requires off-street parking.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
And you, and in R one, there are currently no parking requirements.
So that's why adding this to the parking table is where you need to put a number in.
Yeah, so it seems to me if we just say duplexes in all residential districts, built after twenty twenty-four, require one off-street parking space per unit.
Yeah, so, so drop out of R one there certainly in.
Yeah.
Right.
In all our districts.
Yes.
Okay. We can do that. Okay. Um, Paul had a question, and I had a conflict with him, so I'll bring it to, to the board as a whole. So this is on page sixty-eight. It's up over here, oh, so it's on, relative to the golf cart parking section, so it's four point five, point E, two. Um, each golf cart parking space shall be six feet wide and at least eleven feet deep. Uh, Paul indicated his notes felt that we changed it to thirteen feet. Um, I did a little research this morning, and actually, the, the largest golf cart you can buy now is fourteen point four feet tall, uh, long. So just making you aware, if that's upon the market today, there are, it's the six, the six-seater.
Eight-seater.
It could be an eight-seater, there's three different vendors that make.
Three, two on the back.
Yes. So, if you want to change, I'm just making you aware, there are some on the market that wouldn't even fit if we increased this to thirteen feet.
What did the town do, when we put a whole bunch, uh, kind of out in front of, on Peach Street, right, there's some golf cart?
You can play on Oak Street.
Oh, they're just being used that way.
Yeah, they're just parking that way.
Okay.
And we're just, uh.
They're parking that way, so more can park there.
So I, I don't know what context we were talking, I just said, I don't say thirteen.
I, I know, and I think at one point when we, because again, we've been doing this for two years, we looked at this early on in this process, and probably at that point, we thought the largest golf cart you could buy, um, would be accommodated in a thirteen-foot-long parking space. I'm just making you aware, I looked at it this morning, and confirmed, and talked with Elizabeth over at, um.
East District Park.
Thank you. Um, yeah, you can get those, they're fourteen point four feet long.
I'd like to make a comment on this, as it relates to, because we, we are actually dealing with this right now with Beachfront Master Plan. And, um, although nothing's been proved yet, we have been talking about it. Yes, there are, they're making golf carts bigger now. But if you accommodate the largest possible golf cart, you're essentially just making a cart, but another car spot.
Right.
You're not, you're not co- gaining any efficiencies in parking.
Right.
So where, where we have gravitated to in, in the beachfront design, is we're, we're just building for normal golf carts. If you've got a longer one, go park in a car spot.
Totally.
You know, that, that's, otherwise, you're gonna be wasting so much space when these little carts, which make up the lion's share of them, are taking up all the space. So I would recommend leaving the flexibility of, of, of being able to build normal-sized golf cart spaces. And then, if you got a larger one, you park in a car spot.
I, I took the words right out of my mouth, like I was just gonna say, the majority of the golf carts that I see are the eleven-foot ones, and frankly, when you make those deep spaces, and you put the little golf cart in there.
Can't see them.
You can't see them, when they're pulling out, it's a safety hazard. You have like two Escalades sandwiching this, this golf cart that's all the way in back, and next thing you know, it's darting out in front of you, I hate that.
Alright, so I'm, I'm fine, I can leave it at eleven.
I'm good with eleven.
We, good, good at leaving it at eleven, yes.
Good at eleven.
Okay.
Um, I, I, look, I, this is, this is just a knit I, I have on, you know, this, this overall chart, so I'll start with a question.
What are you pointing to?
Uh, this, the, the minimum parking space requirements table, that we were, that we were back at.
Oh, you're going back, okay.
Just going backwards, yeah. So, um, can, John, how big is actually three hundred square feet of gross floor area? Can you just like pick a shop in town and tell me what would be like three hundred gross square feet?
Thirty by ten?
Yeah, I, I don't know any place that's, that's that either. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know, I'm trying to picture a thirty by, I mean, I'm thinking, Love Letters is pretty small, right? I mean, but I.
It is, but again, all the C one are exempt from, from these requirements, because they're existing commercial C one.
They are. Okay, alright, so this would only be in?
New builds.
New, new builds.
Does it only be new builds, not in C one?
No.
Well, again.
Well, she just said it's exempt from C one.
You still have some vacant lots in C one, so if those get developed, they will have to comply with the parking requirements.
Okay. And where are we going to find these parking spaces for a new sale and rental of building space goods or anything else? If they have to have one space per three hundred square feet, and three hundred square feet is pretty darn small, from, from what I've just heard.
Well.
Take, take a look here, here's, here's another thing, that I don't understand the proportion. An indoor theater, one space per three seats, so our existing theater has about three hundred seats. A new theater would have to come up with a hundred new parking spaces, where are they gonna find that?
I doubt you can fit a new theater in the C one district in this state today.
I know, but I'm, I'm, so I'm, I'm, I'm ca- I'm just, first I'm asking like, um, this does not, this chart does not seem like it was designed for a small walk-around town. This town, this chart seems like it was designed for suburban planning, or, you know, a much larger town. Um, I think, I think like, you just look through, I mean, I, I don't know where the parking is going to come from to meet the requirements of some of these new offices in these, or whatever, in these vacant lots. So, um, I mean, um, I mean, I understand the need for more parking, but, I, I mean, I, I'd like to hear an explanation as to sort of just, and I'm sorry for taking up time, like how is the three hundred square foot, one space per three hundred square foot requirement, is that realistic? Honestly?
I would presume it is, because this is actually a parking standard that the Planning Commission adopted. I was gonna say, within the last decade.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they fleshed this out, and they added some of these uses in here. We did not, um, substanti- I, I, and I'm gonna ask myself, I'm not sure beyond these changes we just made tonight, that we made any changes to the parking standards in this zoning review process.
Mm-hmm.
So what you're seeing is what's on the books today, it has been on the books for some time, for a couple of years now. So I, I tell you that, again, this is dealing with infill lots, or new, new lots that have not been developed, um, where we have zoned it. I'm gonna pick on C one again, because as you may recall, in our ordinance, we are proposing to rezone, um, a town-owned piece of property next to the Rosenwald School, that's gonna be C one now. So that is an area where there could be some of this commercial development occurring, that's gonna have to require parking, accommodation for whatever those uses are.
And we did a special review of that parking, and said.
Of the Rosenwald School property?
No, of the town property, because I was on that, with Ken, I believe.
For it to be a town hall, yes.
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 And we changed the parking requirements, so that town hall wouldn't be required to have as much parking.
Um, we actually, I won't say changed it, we, we swapped out so there could be golf cart parking.
Right.
Um, in lieu of regular parking spaces.
Swapped out and changed, or the, same thing.
So you.
I swap out my shirt, I changed my shirt.
I understand, I don't wanna just say change, and we said we had to, you had to have less parking, we actually gave them the ability, from the town hall perspective, to accommodate golf cart parking in more appropriately-designed spaces, and then still also accommodate regular vehicles coming.
And Katie, I hear you, and, but I also hear, Bill, you're, you're running fast in danger of paving paradise to put up a parking lot.
Well, I'm not running fast or dangerous on anything, Shannon, the town is, this is the town's ordinance.
Katie. Katie, okay, I'm not trying to be argumentative, and I'm just saying that, do we believe that requiring all of this parking, rather than having the city look at parking, does, does the city need a parking garage? Like, all of the, I just wonder, and I'm not going to, we're not trying to hold up the, this meeting, because trust me, I want out of here in 30 minutes. But are we, are we muting development so that people have places to park their cars?
I think that's a conversation you need to have with your fellow commissioners, not me, with your fellow commissioners, because this is the policy and law that's in place today. If you wish to change it, I can't really think that should have been a conversation many months ago.
Well, to Bill Stram's point, if this was, maybe it was you, Katie, if this was made six years ago, this was a much different place six years ago than it is today. And I could see how these dimensions would be, would make more sense in Cape Charleston six years ago. But I think you're spot on. I think this is parking bumping up against development, and I think it's.
Why is that not a legitimate consideration?
It is. I'm saying it is. But I'm, but I'm saying, but both, but both are legitimate considerations.
They are, they are. So it's got to be a balance, right?
Right.
So you're building something, and you're saying, well, I can't build as much as I want because I need parking. But if you're allowed to go, where are they going to park? So, so, so you're, you're solving one problem by creating another one. So, so there has to be a balance in, in that discussion. I don't know what the, I don't know what the answer is. But to just say you're limiting construction, yeah, you are. Because there's, there's a real-world other limitation that we'll have to balance it against.
Understood.
Right, because we haven't solved the parking problem. And as Paul mentioned a couple meetings ago, we just, we keep kicking the issue down the road. But, but now we're sort of like solving it indirectly at the expense of somebody who wants to open up an office that's 300 square feet, and they're going to have to come up with two parking spaces, or maybe three, I don't know. And I, I, has there been any sort of serious look at where they're going to put that in those available lots?
That would have to be part of the development of plan and consideration.
I understand that.
It's no different from the golf cart, mini-golf, right? They had to squeeze 20 in order to meet our table there.
Right, but God's not making any more land.
Mr. Chairman, I think that, that this is a bigger discussion than what task we are under, and I suggest we may consider that as something to take up as a discussion in 2025.
We need to move on here.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So wait, so what are we doing? Are we recommending that this be, are we recommending this table to Town Council? Or are we just?
It's already been there. It's, it's already been approved. You know, here we are trying to, to finish this. Why wasn't this brought up two months, three months ago? So we.
I don't, I don't know. I don't know, Bill.
It is, it is, it is an area, and you know, we've had a parking problem here since I've been here. And, and so it's something that needs to be done, but I, we're not going to solve the problem tonight, so.
Well, we've always talked about a master parking study.
We, we did a study. We did a study.
We've talked about re-reviewing that particular study in light of short-term rentals and what have you, but that has always been something on Town Council's book to come and do a town-wide study, and that's, that would be factored into.
So are we saying tonight, we're saying we're letting it lie, but we want to reserve the right to review it in 2025? Are we, are suggesting that we review it in 2025?
Use, the Planning Commission can always review any elements of your zoning ordinance and provide those reports and studies to the, to the Town Council to see if they wish to pursue an amendment to the zoning ordinance again. You always have that right. That is the function of the Planning Commission, is to continually look at these issues that affect our community.
I suggest we, I suggest this is something we focus on in, in 2025.
Agreed.
After we've gone through this.
You would have to focus on with Town Council direction.
Right.
Yep.
So your recommendation would be, this is a subject that should be looked at.
Yes. I agree. For all of the complaining and hubbub related to STRs, it should be something we can add anyways.
Okay, we ready?
Yes.
Next page is 69, and this is where we referenced earlier, um, up above on this page about the pole height. This is what we are proposing. Uh, we take out some, some sentences and only refer to be in compliance with the Section 4.4 that deals with outdoor lighting standards.
Sorry, Katie, where are we now?
So you're on the page 69, number eight below, the last item on that page, which deals with, again, this section is parking in non-single-family zoning districts.
No, we already agreed to that.
And I'm just making you aware, that was the change.
Ah, right.
So that everybody knew where it was coming from, okay? Then your next one is page 76, if nobody else has any issues.
So, so before we do that.
Yep.
Page 70, top of the page. All lighting is to be compliant with dark-skylight.
That would come out.
Is that coming out?
Yes. So the sentence from light poles used in parking lots with 100 blah blah blah, all subsequent sentences would come out. And we would insert in there that it just has compliance with Section 4.4, outdoor lighting standards.
So I actually had a question as for clarification. I'm sorry, I didn't realize we passed the page. It's on 63. 4.5 point A5. No single-family detached residential parking area may be used for the sale, repair, dismantling, servicing, or long-term storage of any vehicles. Does that include boats? Do we set them different sections?
So again, we're all dealing with Section 4.5, which is our off-street parking and loading standards. Will these direct us under general requirements, number five? Five-five, 585, top of page 63. Yes. And you're asking if that deals with boat repairs occurring on lots?
It says vehicles. I just don't know if that includes people parking boats.
Or their land, or whatever it is. You can park a boat on your property today under, under the zoning ordinance. Repair of things of that nature may be a little more questionable. The town code deals with parking of boats on the streets, so that gets handled not under the zoning ordinance, but under the town code. And that has a time limitation for the parking of boats or trailers there. I think we also deal with motor, motorhomes as well in the town code.
It actually says recreational equipment, so it's, utility trailers are not affected, but boat trailers are, and RVs and camper are.
Okay. Pulling this back forwards, if everybody's good to keep moving forward. Okay, so page 76. And again, this is under demolition policy guidelines.
So, so before we get to demolition party guidelines, how about up above for Section 4.8?
Yes.
We changed, we changed satellite dish to communication slash data equipment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't.
And then we took out the dish type, and it says satellites or other ground-building-mounted da-da-da-da. And then in the first one, it says large satellite dishes are not permitted within the town of Cape Charles. And, and you should put in parentheses after that, should not be larger than two feet or 24 inches.
So back me up one more time, Bill, sorry.
Okay, so.
So you're.
Section 4.8 should not be.
Communication.
Slash data, data equipment.
Data equipment.
And then A, you take out the word dish type and just start it with satellite. And then under number one, satellite, large satellite dishes are not permitted within the town of Cape Charles. And then, like in parentheses after that, should not be larger than two feet, 24 inches.
No, we're even two feet. Everybody okay with adding that change?
Yeah, and Katie, just going back, if you can clarify on the parking.
Hang on, I want to make sure everybody's good with Section 4.8, those changes.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
4.8 satellite dishes, okay. Go ahead, Bill, now you're up.
So back to the off-street parking, just on the shared parking section, which is 4.5 C B, option two. Shared parking arrangements, I, I assume would be like, uh, just either adjacent properties, adjacent commercial properties.
Again, it's page 67, so everybody knows what page we're on. And you're talking, starting at the top of the page, C, shared parking.
Yeah.
Everybody's there now, go ahead.
Yeah, so shared parking arrangements would be like adjacent commercial properties who are trying to sort of. Yeah, in the vicinity, and they allow.
We have not specified a distance away from a piece of property.
Okay, all right. And I, um, and I, I am not familiar with the Urban Land Institute, but the reason that caught my eye is that we're really not an urban neighborhood. I mean, are we bound by the procedures of an urban land institute? Or is there any flexibility in here for like more rural solutions?
Oh, I think the, the reason for putting that in there was a reference document as to how you put something together, okay? That was the only thing that you could point to, to say, okay, what would, what would this look like? Where do, where do I go to find it?
Yeah.
Was.
Or other approved procedures. So again, we'll give it out.
Right, right. So we do have an out. Okay, thank you. I, I wasn't familiar with the organization, and it seemed odd that we would include an urban planning study in a rural community, so.
Okay. Okay, page 76, everybody good up to then?
Yep.
Okay, 76 is demolition policy guideline. Paul rightly noted. We do have this in two areas. I thought we picked it, and so that we got them mimicking each other all the way, all the way through. It seems like when we were cleaning it up, we may have deleted something we shouldn't have done. So he is asking us to add back in, if the property is located in the historic district overlay, then the owner must follow Section 8.21. If the property is located in the historic harbor area overlay district, then the owner must follow Section 9.21. He's just trying to make people aware that there are some other requirements under the overlay districts.
And the same goes for.
The following comment, yes.
Demolition by neglect, just a reference.
There you go. We will do that. Good, and add that in as a note. Your next one down is 83 through 87.
Katie, I, I have a question on the demolition policy guidelines. And the cross-reference to Section 8.21. If I under, if I understand this correctly, if you're in the historic overlay district, and if you go to 8.21, it, it's talking about contributing structures, right?
Correct.
Right, and contributing structures are either built before 1964 and on the National Historical List, or have been, um, I, I think they've just been sort of determined by the town to contribute to the character or something, something along, along those lines. When I was going through some of the requirements under the offer to sell, and I think I know what this section means, but it, it seems like the time schedule for offers to sell that property, I haven't quite caught up with inflation.
When we got to 821, I was suggesting we ought to look at those numbers or just do.
And, and I'm, and I'm.
I can answer this one right off the bat.
That's correct.
It comes right out of state law.
That's right.
Okay.
This is, this is what we are allowed to do.
Okay.
And I can't change that process, the timeframe, or any of the evaluations associated with it.
Were allowed to do or compelled to do?
Those are requiring, those are words right out of state code.
This is what you can put in there relative to demolition and, and any property that may be considered, and how the town can deal with that, potentially purchasing it from.
So you're telling me we're compelled to put this language in, or not?
Yes. This is what you are allowed to have if you're going to be any demolition.
On demolition.
Okay, so this is, so this is, this is required under state law?
Yes.
Okay, and, okay, all right, thank you.
If I'm not nimble, I don't know what the hell I am.
Just so long as you're accurate.
Okay, moving on.
Katie, 411 on solar panels?
Yes.
All roof, so 411A, all rooftop solar panels shall be screened from you. This should be accomplished for pitch crews by placing the panels in the back half of the building. Is that saying if I've got, facing the street, I've got a roof this way, I can put them on the back half of them even though I can see it from the street?
Generally, you can't, because that is one of the things, again, if you're in the historic district, there are some requirements we reference back to this, but we also have language in the historic district overlay relative to solar panels. If you're in the PUD, that's wholly different, not covered under the zoning ordinance. So this is, that, and particularly, we only be dealing with our three properties at this point. Because everywhere else in the R1 is in the historic district.
And then this all applies to even, you know, commercial industrial, every single one of our zoning districts. My question is, you know, as time moves on and you start putting some big facilities in the, in the harbor industrial areas that we have, I mean, we should theoretically want them if they've got the space up there to be putting up solar panels and things along those lines. And, you know, their roof lines may be in ways that we don't understand, and we're going to limit those in all those other districts.
All I can say is, um, don't go theorizing at this point for the harbor district yet, because as you know, it's our intent and it's the Town Council's intent, we still need to, to go out and do a master plan for the harbor district, for the harbor area as a whole, including the railroad property, and develop new design guidelines and standards of development we would like to see in those districts.
You're saying that we will at some point in the, in the not-too-distant future.
This could be some component of solar panels that gets addressed through that process, and we may need to make further zoning amendments as a result of when we finish that master planning process.
Well, definitely, you can make text amendments before a master plan. So if a solar panel comes up in that planning, we'll do good address it again then.
That's fine. And then on the top of 412, residuals, misspelled. In the first sentence, RS.
Okay. We will always do several more reviews of both spelling checks and editing to make sure we've got all the section references correct and the numbering correct, so we will probably be going over this a dozen more times from now and the end of this sentence. Okay, moving on.
When you say us, that's you, town staff.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm kidding.
I'm through with this.
Moving on to page 83 through 87. Again, as we've already referenced, this is our placeholder for the STRs. Again, now that Town Council's actually voted something, that will, will end up being amended in through Town Council's actions on this article, on the full zoning ordinance. Said, I'm now pushing on page six of our tracking chart, and I get to jump really, really far.
139?
Huh?
139?
139, that is correct.
We're skipping over signs and everything?
I was going to say, Jack, we had some sign changes from Paul. Did they not make it into the tracking?
I have questions.
The page numbering is showing you is 139 edited. But anyway, yes, actually, our first conversation is actually, it's not page 139, it is in the sign chart. So I'm going to ask you to open your, our, your big sign chart, Section 11-1. And Paul's first question was under actually the commercial district signs, the harbor district signs. And under the temporary signs, which included temporary movable signs such as A-frame, banner, chalkboard, feather, off-limits, portable, or wall sign. He thought we had authorized a max of five signs, not three, under the size and number. So again, on the chart we currently show, signs less than 16 square feet would be a max of three for these temporary-type signs. Paul thinks it was five. I did not find that in my notes, nor was it in the minutes from that meeting either. So I brought it up for discussion today.
I have no problem with leaving it at three. I have no problem with leaving it at three, I just noted at that time. So for me, five is fine.
Okay.
Five is...
Three.
Three is fine?
Five is fine for me, either one. I mean, I...
So these are temporary, these could be outside.
Off the site, yeah.
No, outside or onsite, so.
With a duration of 45 days?
Right.
Okay.
It's not...
How many did we say?
Right now, so the chart, it says three, and that's a three signs of temporary movable signs.
And the duration on those is, what did we say?
Forty-five days.
Thirty-five days.
Forty-five days.
Forty-five.
Forty-five, I'd say.
Forty-five days.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, three's fine.
Why did we, okay, alright, never mind.
Okay, we're gonna leave it at three.
I got it.
Move along, okay. Then your next one was also under the window definition, again, same table. You are correct, Paul, on this, but I just need to hear this from the board as a whole. Window definition was added under other on this same chart, because we took it, it used to be part of the wall signs, window signs used to be one category. We said, let's separate out those two. I probably put it in the wrong spot. I put the definition of window signs in the other column, but I didn't list any criteria for size or number. When I went back into those minutes and notes, I didn't see that we actually defined it or discussed it. So...
I thought we, when we did this initially, it was, we talked size, and then we decided on window space. And that you had to have X amount of space, and that window had to be left open.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, I remember that as well.
That was not in minutes from that meeting at all.
Because we have all these people that have all this stuff on their windows.
I remember that.
And I thought we said, I can't remember, but it was like, half the window?
I thought I remember this too, because we, because somebody mentioned like safety, being able to see into the premise. Or see out of the premise, but mostly in, I think. Can't have somebody like just covering up the entire way to the paint.
I'm not saying they're putting them in those conversations, I'm just saying no resolution was ever reached on setting a number of window signs.
Number or area of the window sign?
Number, nor size.
Nor size.
Window signs.
Yeah, I think when we were talking, people felt, oh, we can put notices up and we can do, and we didn't want to get carried away with that, so we did not.
That's why I think it's, there is no specification here.
We just add not to exceed 50% of the window space?
We can do that if you would care to.
That's easy enough to do.
Easy enough.
So again, under size, number, I would add the category of window signs.
So Dr. Bull would be grandfathered in under this? The optometrist?
Hang on, hang on, window signs, you're proposing...
Titcom.
Titcom.
Not to exceed...
Yeah, the optometrist.
I didn't hear a number, not to exceed...
Bulls down the street, chiropractor.
Sixty percent.
No, we said the entire window.
Yeah.
Right?
Fifty percent of the window.
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent of the window size.
Okay. And that's our only limitation beyond that. That could be one sign, that could be five signs, as long as it doesn't exceed 50% in total.
And we included grandfather language in statutes? I'm thinking of some of the windows.
I don't need to put grandfather language, because again, anything, when we already have that language in here, date of adoption of this ordinance sets these standards for signs. You have to comply after the date of this ordinance gets adopted.
But that's my point. I mean, if somebody has a window sign that's more than 50% of the area...
I already have that language in here that tells me that, yes.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Can I ask a question on window signs? So I've got a store, and I put a placard a foot off the window, standing in my store, facing out. Is that a window sign? Because I'm not up... You've had this one?
We had this.
Yes, I think it is.
Sign visible outside the window and attached to or than 18 inches in front of or behind the surface of a window or door.
So if I move it back 19 inches, I can fill it up as all I want, I just...
Yes, you can.
There you go.
Okay, excellent.
It's part of the discussion here.
Yes, you can.
Glad I missed it.
You should be very happy.
That is correct.
Okay, I think that covered windows. Article four, where's our next area heading to? I'm sorry, article six.
Katie, at the beginning of article two, article five signs in section 2.0, animated signs, what you have typed in there, that last sentence makes no sentence, and I'm sure that's...
I didn't hear where you said, Ian, at all.
Section, article five, section two, definitions, animated signs. Page 129 of the edited version, I don't know the other one. It just finishes, "This shall include demean," and then just stops, so.
Okay, give me a second.
It's on page 89.
Oh, I know it's in that one, looking under our redline version, trying to see what might have been there. It's exactly that in the redline version.
I think you could just delete that, "This shall include demean," I think.
Should refer to as a moving sign.
Period.
Just period, yeah, that'll do it. Okay? Okay. Okay, so we are now up to article six. Oh, this is a bear, Paul.
Oh dear.
So this is floodplain ordinance. So I want to make you aware, so page 114, there is a reason why that says county. I'm gonna walk you through that really quick. So under page 114, section 6.2.4, if there are jurisdictional boundary changes, so if this town should choose to ever propose an annexation of land again, and until you can bring your zoning ordinance in compliance, this gives you the wherewithal that you're dealing with that land under a floodplain jurisdictional oversight, until the town can get their zoning ordinance in place to deal with the newly annexed land. That's why it says county, Paul, and not town. Okay? Moving on.
Katie, general question about the scope of the floodplain ordinance.
Yes.
What parts of town would actually be, what parts of town are in a floodplain?
None.
Currently, none.
Currently, none.
Currently, none.
FEMA redid it.
But those maps are under the jurisdiction of the, what's that body open, Congress? Congress, sorry.
So why...
Congress sets the schedules to when the FEMA maps get updated. They're the ones who fund it, and they will release those agencies to go update those maps. And then once those happen, those maps then get released to jurisdictions, to the state level, and moving all the way down to the localities. And we have a period of time to review, challenge, and/or accept the FEMA map as they get amended.
Okay, so...
So it's been 2000, I think it's in here somewhere, I think it was 2015.
It's been about 10 years ago, because when we moved here, we did play flood insurance.
I was the county administrator in North Hampton when it was last done.
And now it was rezoned, so we're no longer in the floodplain. The town is no longer in the floodplain.
Okay, so why is this in here if we're not in a floodplain?
You are required to have the floodplain ordinance, because that jurisdiction can change.
Is it a federal requirement or state requirement?
Federal.
Federal, and then state in turn? The locality?
Yeah.
Yes. So if our designation should ever change, and lands become floodplain designations again, these are the rules that would govern how we handle any development on those properties.
And we think those new maps are going to come out?
I don't know when.
We don't know.
Don't know.
Do not know, that's under the control of Congress.
And was basically this section more or less a pull from a state document? Or did we do dramatic updates?
We did, they did proposed template ordinance, yeah. And there were some citations, section changes throughout all of this, because they switched themselves over from articles to sections, and I didn't catch all those. I've now done that, Paul. Everything is now appropriately tied back to each other, all the way through this whole section.
It was a tough one.
Yes, it was a tough one. So with that said, any of the numbering changes I have done to ensure the internal section references are accurate, I have done that for you, and that needs to be, that's just part of the change that needed to be fixed all the way through this whole section. Okay? Paul did ask a question on page 120. Quasi to where this discussion was headed, and this is under 6.3.2. Where do you find the floodplain district map overlay? It is the FEMA map, it is available in the building official's office, and he provides that to people when they need it.
Is it in online too?
Yeah, you can get it online.
I did not find it online.
It used to be online.
It's not listed on his or yours?
No, I wouldn't refer to us, I would actually refer you to the federal website to go look at it.
Okay, but once upon a time, it used to be on our website, the latestams, so.
And I can see if we can make that happen, but you're correct, Jeb right now has hard copies in the office, and he pulls them out.
So it's not the same as the firm?
No, there's, well, there are different things that we're looking at when we are doing the floodplain evaluation. So we are looking at some elevation standards that we have to adhere to as well.
But we do have maps listed on our website for the flood insurance grid map. That is there, and there's two...
It is there, I'm not sure it's the accurate ones up on our page at this point, and it's not been my focus to look at the floodplain stuff, because it's all under the jurisdiction of the building official. So we'll make sure it's current with whatever we adopt here in this ordinance, and we'll get our website presence better.
But it's not the same, that's what you're saying, the insurance is not the same as FEMA.
Well, no, actually, because we're part of the, how was Jeb see? We actually are part of the community survey, insurance...
Community rating system.
There it is, thank you, the community rating system. So this town does participate in that, and so you do receive some benefit from being a part of that. The community gets rated as a whole, and that does help you get some reduction in your property insurance as it relates to it. So we are part of the firm maps, those are part of that process, part of the community rating system, but the FEMA floodplain map is different.
Yeah, that's, okay, that's what it is.
Okay. Okay, anything else on page six? Sorry, page six of our tracking chart, sorry.
Oh, page six, sorry, yes, okay.
I'm gonna keep plowing through because we are so close to finishing.
We are.
So I'm going to page 134, which is article seven, which is the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Overlay District. Paul asked this in a couple of spots, I just wanted to let everybody know this, where you'll see that there's some highlighted state statute sections here. We have built this in as hyperlinks, and that will continue, so that's why they're showing up in a color. And we will verify all those as we get to a final document. And so that's the intent, is we want to be able to at least link it, okay? Your next one down was on page 180, article nine, which is again the historic harbor overlay district. Again, Paul's indicated under section 9.3.4, the appeal section, that we needed to mimic language that we have elsewhere under HDRB appeals, that's correct, and so I'm recommending that to happen. If you guys are okay with that.
Yep.
Okay. And then moving down to appendix A. We've already talked about the bed and breakfast, that we're gonna take this out of the definition and move it over to the standards and all of the four. Paul had noted under boarding houses and rooming houses, sorry, I'm on page 186 of our definitions. Paul had noted that boarding houses and rooming houses have now been deleted, but it was still showing up in table 4.5. So we're gonna get it out of this ordinance as a whole, because we no longer use the terms boarding houses or rooming houses anywhere.
So you're gonna remove it from table five?
Yes, we are going to do that, so I just wanted to note that all the way through. Page eight of our tracking. The next one I have is under page 210. And this is a temporary family healthcare structures, add it ahead in as a definition, because we reference it as one of our uses, and so we needed to make sure we have a clean definition as to what that means under the state code. So again, with your concurrence, I will add that in. And guess what?
That's it.
We're done.
See, it's only 8:05.
So I'm gonna stop talking, because everything in pink, and any of the other changes we made this evening that should be amended, we'll add to this chart, if that is what we are asking, if you'd like to recommend all the pink items and the new ones.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that we accept the amended motions to recommend approval with these amendments that we've had, and pink and those that were added tonight as we discussed with very second.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, to accept the pink amendments? And it's been seconded?
Pink and further amendments that we made.
Yeah, I'm sorry, and further amendments.
Right.
That were made tonight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Ayes have it. Okay, now we have...
The map, that was it, the map.
You did the map already.
Yep.
So...
This is going to the...
We have no new business.
No.
Next planning commission meeting is January 7th at 6:00 p.m.
I will not be here. I will be in Caribbean on a cruise ship.
Good for you.
We can dial you in.
How about this?
We'll call in to you.
If the town can figure out how to get me on a Zoom.
I will tell you, as of right now, we are December 3rd. I have no applications in for any conditional use before you. So we may not need a meeting, and I may ask for relief from you guys for a little bit.
Be a New Year's present.
Just because from here, this whole motion gets drafted over to the town council and the staff report, it's going to their December 19th meeting, hopefully for their action. And then we still have probably another three weeks worth of work, three or four weeks of just putting it all in, getting into the proper formatting, and then getting this out into a live document for both you, town council, staff persons, historic board. We got a whole bunch of now PR work we've got to do to the boards that govern portions of this ordinance.
So the town council will see just what's shown in the clean version, let's say, and an updated table?
Of this, yes. That is what they, yeah. Town council, of course, has the whole binder already. They already have the red binder, they got the same binder you guys got, yes.
And will we at some point, when will we see the final updated, like the STR piece that we...
The town council's gonna have a work session on Monday night to discuss if they want to make any additional changes. So I'm hoping that if there's any consensus for a change, that they will articulate that on Monday night, so we can let the public know what that is prior to the Thursday meeting.
We do have copies of what town council voted a week and a half ago, and we're happy to give you copies of that this evening as you're entering.
That'll be great.
Is that work session closed, John, or open to the public?
It's open to the public.
Okay.
They're doing the meeting December 9th, and then the regular meeting is December 19th. I think they're two weeks apart, a week apart from each other.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.